And then I will convene the meeting. All right, I'm going to. I'm gonna, well, I don't want to mute myself when I'm leading the pledge, but that's gonna ding in the background, I'm sorry. Oh, maybe it's not wowed. Okay.
Well, look at the flag. Oh, awesome.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order. Please rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll start with our moment of silence today. For the following. Regina M. Scafido Beck, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Andrew Harrington, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Tyson N. Townsend. Attended school in the North Syracuse Central School District. Daniel W. Donald W. Yoxey, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Helen Duda, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Robin L. McCormick Quackenbush, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Tina M. Taubman, attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School District. RB Barbara A. Johnston, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Louis W. Clark Jr., a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. Hey, we have for us today another budget update from Mr. Keegan. So I'll let Mr. Keegan take it from here and share the screen. Thank you.
Good evening. I've got a, I've got a brief update and so I'll dive right into our agenda here. We're gonna talk a little bit about our change in our revenues. Just refresh everybody on the governor's state aid proposal, giving an update on the tax cap, which I did the last meeting. Talk about our expenditures a little bit, fund balance and reserves. Dan's gonna just talk one more time about considerations impacting the budget. Talk about our next steps and then since the board will be voting on the vehicle and library propositions, we'll refresh your memory on those. And conclude with the budget process timeline. So I just want to emphasize again, the board knows this well, but that we are very dependent on state aid and the tax levy. The state aid representing forty, almost forty point seven percent of our revenues and the tax levy representing almost fifty five percent of our revenues. So, you know, we, we are very much dependent on those two sources. I don't have any additional information to share with you tonight about our state aid. We're still using the governor's budget proposal and we understand the legislature is working with various governor, with various budget proposals in hopes of having an approved budget by April 1st. But we do have a adjustment to our, our tax levy. Which, which I'll take you through in detail. Spoiler alert here, last time we were together, we had about four point four million dollar deficit. We're now down to about a three and a half million dollar deficit. And I'll talk a little bit about how we got there in a moment. So as I said, the governor's, the governor's budget proposal is the basis for our state aid. We now today with the, the federal coronavirus relief bill signed into law. We're optimistic that the seven point eight million dollars included in the governor's budget proposal will in fact be paid to schools and we're hopeful that we'll actually get additional funds. I, you know, I want to emphasize again, we've had zero luck in, in convincing anybody that the foundation aid formula should be followed. We're still receiving significantly less than we should be under foundation aid. And we want to just remind everybody that we're still. We're still concerned about the governor's proposal to consolidate all those expense driven aids into this thing called services aid. And I'll show you in a minute a little bit about that, but property tax cap calculation, we're at three point oh five percent. We've been hovering around three percent with, with the latest changes that we've, we've pushed through. And that's again, based on a consumer price index of one point two three. And so it's basically, you know, a very low inflation rate. And we are currently talking about using four million dollars of fund balance to, to support the budget this year. One of the topics we want to introduce to the board tonight is the possibility of using more fund balance and reserves to create a soft landing if the gap is not completely closed by state aid. So here are those state aid numbers again. We looked at these weeks ago when the governor first put his proposal out. As you can see, no increase in foundation aid. This is the services aid number that, that we've expressed concern about. You know, currently we get BOSI's aid based on the programs that we subscribe to with BOSI's. You know, it's the Board of Cooperative Education Services. By getting everybody to collaborate, we can provide good services and, and, and they're often a very high percentage of our BOSI's. Aid comes in, in the, in the, in the cases where, you know, we are actually doing things more economically by working with BOSI's. Transportation aid, you know, is the same thing. So for us to have these consolidated, these expense driven aids consolidated into a thing called services aid is very dangerous and could, could put a lot of budget pressure on the school district. Again, we just want to keep that in the top of everybody's mind that. And we've gotten some assurances from our legislators, legislators that they are working toward restoring expense based aids as opposed to services aid. This is the seven point eight million dollars I was just referring to. So yes, we're gonna, it's likely now that we're gonna receive this federal stimulus aid or funds. And all that's going to do at this time is offset the reductions in state aid that we're going to be feeling due to the New York State's fiscal crisis. And so at this time, based on what the governor has told us, it's, it's a zero sum game. We're gonna, we're gonna be made whole. And that's gonna happen through federal stimulus funds. I mentioned earlier and I want to reiterate, I'm hopeful that because the bill was passed and that, that there's a chance that we'll get more state aid when the legislature is done with the budgeting process and we probably won't know that till April 1st. Looking at the tax cap, one of the, one of the things we've been working with fiscal advisors on, and I talked a little bit about this last time, is just strategies for financing our capital projects. And we, we took another look at that and we made a slight reduction in our, the debt service payments. And as a result of that, that lowered the local share of those debt service payments and dropped the tax levy a little bit, down to three point oh five percent or about seventy one dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home after star. So that's, that's our revenues. I'm gonna switch to our expenditures now. I say this every time I present this slide, but it's so important to say we're people based business. The most important thing we do is put adults in front of children. And so it's no surprise that most of our money goes to paying, paying our debt service. You'll notice if you, if you remember, this debt service number is down. That's what I just said. One strategy for improving this budget scene and getting it down to a lower deficit was to reduce the amount of debt service we have. And we've been able to do that by looking at our financing. We continue to, we spend about eighteen million dollars with BOSI's. It's a slight increase over last year's budget. You know, we continue to work with BOSI's on, on programs. One of the things we were talking about today with our, with our auditors was our data protection and security co, so brand new co, sir, brand new service that BOSI's offers. Hugely beneficial to the North Syracuse School District and allows us to be in compliance with new ed law two D regulations. And so that's just one example of the many services we get from BOSI's. Looking at the, the actual expenses. Again, we're still showing an increase in our, in our salaries. We've tightened up our benefits quite a bit and we're, we're at a point now where we are showing our expenses increasing about three point five seven percent. Kind of looking at, you know, a couple of things we've done, health benefits. We have done a great job. We've got a great committee that works with our health benefits consultants. We do everything we possibly can to try to maintain or increase the quality of benefits while controlling costs. And we've just had an amazing track record of success. And once again, we're, we're, we're gonna see a lower healthcare costs. We, we've talked about this before, the TRS, that's our teacher retirement system and ERS rates, we have those, they've been incorporated into the budget. Our salaries and wages are based on the contractual increases that we've given our employees. We are seeing fuel prices go up, but we still believe that our budget is adequate and, and actually has funds in there to anticipate future fuel price increases. And we are, we hope this month to be wrapping up the and getting the final information on our three year, new three year supply agreement that we'll be using for our natural gas and electric purchases. Dan, do you want to talk a little bit about these considerations that are driving the budget?
Absolutely. So the first thing, we're looking at the student learning deficits that have been caused by COVID. Again, we realize that our students have been the end of last year and all of this year, some fully remote, some in a hybrid, but not going five days a week for most of our students. And we do recognize that there are some gaps and we're building in some strategies into the budget to try to address those learning needs. One of the main issues, and again, last year was the main focus, I again, I'm prioritizing it. The social emotional needs of our students, staff and families. This pandemic has been a trauma for all involved and we need to make sure we're addressing those students and, and their families and, and the staff. As we come back to more in-person learning, we need to make sure we're, we're doing all that we can to improve things for them. There's some ongoing management of COVID, just health and safety protocols. As you know, there's been expenditures and things that we've had to do with cleaning and purchasing of EPEs. There's a lot of things that have just had to be put at the forefront in order to get us back to some in-person learning. And as you know, that six feet social distancing, the Department of Health has said that we can go to three feet with the barriers and that's what we're, we're looking at at this time to get us back to more in person. And this last one with instructional practices, again, if there are any changes, there has to be a dialogue that we have with our units regarding this because we need to make sure anything that is new, there's discussion first before anything is implemented. So if we go to the next one, Don, you're gonna pick this up?
Sure, sure. So make sure. So kind of to just summarize the financial stuff. We, we're looking at a three, three point oh five percent tax levy increase. That's at the cap, so it's one yes, more yes vote than no vote, simple majority. We're currently at that point where it's about a three point six million dollar deficit and I'm, I'm gonna talk more about that in a moment. Our estimated revenues for next year increased by about two point six million or one point five percent. And our expenditures are up to about a hundred and seventy eight point seven million. An increase of about six point two million or three point five seven percent. And as Dan just said, you know, the programmatic changes are gonna be focused on fostering the district's recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And so let's, let's talk about next steps. So, you know, we're certainly looking at a list of possible budgetary reductions, you know, based on enrollment, student needs and, and other operational considerations. But we want to make sure that we're, we're paying close attention to the items that Dan just outlined as we go through that process. We're still waiting for the state to adopt the final state budget and, and we'll find out what our school aid numbers are at that time. And we're hoping this happens before April 1st and, and we're hoping that we get more state aid. But, you know, after the possible budgetary reductions are identified and the state aid is increased, you know, we're, we might not have that three point five million or three point six million dollar deficit eliminated. So we're, we're considering and, and we'd ask the board to think about using some additional fund balance and reserves to close the remaining deficit. This will allow for some time for us to, you know, evaluate things over the next year. So that we can, you know, align our revenues and expenses, but not make cuts in a panicked manner. I think one thing the board has done and supported is this notion of shoring up our balance sheet to be ready for a rainy day. And, you know, it's, it's a rainy day. Unfortunately, we've had more rainy days in my time here at North Syracuse than I'd like to, than I, than I had hoped. But, but I think we're in a better shape from a balance sheet perspective in terms of our reserves and fund balances. So let me, let me share that with you a little bit. So to refresh the board's memory, you guys created these three reserves here. It's a, a, you know, an ERS reserve for our employee retirement system. Again, those rates are going up and we want it to be prepared so that we didn't have to make cuts to support retirement. Same thing with TRS, the rates are going up and, and we've got a reserve that we can use to offset some of those cost increases. And we have an EBLR reserve. And what that basically is, is that's when employees leave, we can, if we have to pay any post-retirement costs such as, you know, sick days or vacation time or any of those things, we can charge them to that reserve. So those three reserves, we can, we can potentially use to soften the landing as we come through this difficult time. Also want to just remind you that we, although our, our fund balance hasn't increased, you know, our fund balance is at close to the level of four percent. I'm sorry, this is just another, another, another slice of our reserves though, I apologize. This is just the detailed balance of our, our reserves. And, and so basically our fund balance is in, is in a good position as well. And I, I, I can tell you that we're at about four percent. And, and that's the amount that we'll have available to us, should we want to use that to to cover some of those costs. To remind the board. Vehicle bonding proposition is coming up. That'll be something that we're gonna ask you to approve tonight. What we're gonna do is buy ten sixty five passenger buses and two smaller buses used for special needs, specially equipped. And one loader, bucket loader for our M and O department. The twelve buses. And the loader will cost one point seven million dollars and it's about a dollar seventy three per year for a house assessed a hundred thousand dollars after transportation aid and before star. We'll also ask you, the voters are gonna have to approve the library proposition and we'll ask you guys to approve that proposition tonight to be on the ballot. And very nominal increase for the library, a one point nine percent increase that they're asking for. And, and we're, you know, here's, here we are on March fifteenth. We were originally going to ask you to approve the proposed budget on the fifth, but I think depending on what information's available to us between now and then, we're, we're saying that maybe, maybe it would be appropriate to adopt the budget on the twelfth. This way we give the board more time to consider some of the things we talked about tonight, the final state aid from the state. Possible reductions that we'd be looking at as well as a use of fund balance and reserves. That's all I have. Any, any questions or comments?
Don, I have a question.
Sure.
Mary, um, so how are we able to drop the debt service? Do we have some debt fall off the books or?
Well, that, that we knew about, but some of it was just the timing of when we financed Bear, Bear Road and how much principal reduction we made. Our early assumptions were that we were gonna be paying down more debt for Bear Road sooner. But we're not gonna do our bonding of that until, you know, so this is till twenty twenty two. And so there is no sense in making any principal, any significant principal reductions on that project before then. And we initially had an assumption of making larger principal reductions, but with interest rates as low as they are and not bonding until twenty two. We, we decided we're gonna, we're gonna lower the amount of debt service associated with Bear Road in the twenty one, twenty two school year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We were kicking around another budget subcommittee date. I don't know if that ever, I don't think it ever landed on a certain date. We don't have that yet.
Thursday or Friday is what I heard.
Right. So I don't know.
Your Friday. I have to work out which day works best for the four. I've got, I just got everybody's in, so.
Okay, thank you. No, I just wondered. All right. I, I know that all I know about, you talked about services aid. I know that neither House bill, the one House bills, neither one of those were keen on that idea. So I don't see the governor hanging on to that in his current struggles against the, the two bran, other branches. But I, we don't expect really know, I'm assuming, anything else about numbers until they finalize a budget.
That's usually the case is that we'll, and I'm hoping that it's on time. The tricky thing about it is it's during our closure that we'd find out about it. And that's why we're talking about a possible April twelfth meeting. Last thing we want to do is have all this information come together while people are on vacation or away. You know, families are disengaged, staffs disengage a little bit. And so, hey, if we find out, you know, in the next week, that's a different, different story. But it's likely it'll go right down the wire.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Keegan. I believe Mr. Bowles is gonna review the parent and staff survey results with us.
Yes, just. Thank you, Connie. And the, these were not long surveys. We really just wanted to make sure we were touching base with our parents and, and community members and our, then the second survey with our staff about the most recent needs and, and changes that are gonna be happening. So the first report will be the parents. So the top three results for each survey, if you look, the parent survey had five thousand nine hundred and ten responded. Most, the highest percentage was from the high school at nineteen percent. Then the junior high parents at fourteen percent. Then Gillette Road had fifteen percent. On the staff survey, we had nine hundred and ninety seven people respond. Again, nineteen percent at the high school, thirteen percent at the junior high and ten percent at Gillette Road. So some of the results. The question was, my child is currently taking part in the following instructional model. What we have here was sixty nine percent responded that they in person or hybrid at this time. And the smaller blue bar talks about in-person learning. And the in-person were either four or five days a week. And that represents some of our classes that are twelve one four, eight one one, twelve one one and fifteen one. So they're coming to school more than two days currently. And the last was at twenty eight percent fully remote instruction. The next part of the survey, we wanted to get a sense about the social distancing restrictions that were being talked about, less than six feet for in-person learning. People responded, yes, they would be comfortable at seventy nine percent. And twenty one percent said they would not be comfortable. So we do have people that are still choosing for remote and that's okay. The next question with the parents, if the social distancing restrictions were reduced, would you be comfortable using district transportation? We really needed to kind of get some numbers for Matt Conti to start planning and prepping what this will, what the impact will be on transportation. Because as you know, many of the runs based on the hybrid model and then people going remote have totally changed. And we need to prepare for what will, needs to happen. So sixty eight percent said they would be comfortable having their children ride the bus. So Matt Conti is taking that information. And nineteen percent said, no, they would not be comfortable. And then thirteen percent said, my child does not utilize transportation. So before we get into the staff results, one of the things that was the biggest question or comment that parents made was when are, are kids going to come back for more in-person learning? So as the board knows, letters were sent to staff last Thursday regarding the proposed plan. As well as on Friday, a letter went out to parents. So we're looking at K four. Potential to bring people back on April twelfth for five days a week and then five through twelve, looking at bringing students back four days a week. But that was the biggest question that was pretty routine for parents about getting students back for more in-person. Oh, and the other one was, are we, what are we going to do about their social emotional issues for students? And we're also working on that as well. So the staff survey. Moved through and you can see by the different color blue bars, but the, the biggest is five through twelve hybrid was at twenty nine percent in the middle there. We did have a bar down at the bottom that just talks about, do not work in an instructional position. So the next thing, bar was K through four, hybrid was at seventeen percent. And that's kind of the golden rod bar that was there. So when looking at this next question, if all hybrid students were to return up to five days per week, which of the following items represent your top three areas of concern? So we did have a lot of different things that are listed, but I would say the, the largest was the third from the bottom in green. And that was a continuation of cleaning protocols at forty percent. That was a big concern that was a repeat occurrence. And so we want to make sure that that is listed. The other was at twenty eight percent and it's in the middle there and it looks like a, I'll say, military green. And that was at twenty eight percent time to prepare and plan. That again was repeated over and over as a common theme. And again, the next highest was the second from the top, it was contracting COVID at twenty seven percent. That was a big concern of the staff. And then right below that at twenty six percent and it's kind of a, almost a burgundy down then near the bottom there at twenty six percent. And people concerned about having to quarantine. So those are some of the, the larger concerns, but a repeated theme over and over in comments was having time to prepare and plan. And also the benefits of the, the middle of the week Wednesdays as far as being able to work with students and to prepare and plan the PLCs. The next question was around social distancing guidelines are relaxed and we bring students back up to five days a week. Which items best support, support you with the transition? Overwhelmingly, the top one at seventy five percent, clear communication and timeline. So letting people know what's going to happen, when it's going to happen and, and or how. That was the number one. So people can know what's going to be going on and then they can plan. The next highest one was in the middle in orange, just clear priorities. One of the things that I've heard is what's going to be the expectation? And we're bringing students back to in-person learning. Some of them have not been with us since last March. They've been remote and they haven't been in schools. Several grade levels are affected even more because there was a transition. So if I was a fourth grader going to a middle school for the first time and never have stepped foot in either Rox or Gillette, the same would be a seventh to eighth and I've not gone to the junior high in person. Connie Terroche used to have her hot dog roast before so students can walk around and, and with their schedule. And if I'm a ninth grader going in the tenth and I have And if I'm a ninth grader going in the tenth, and I have not been in person at all, these transitions are concerning. And people want to make sure that they have the time to plan and prepare students. But we want to make sure we get to know our students well, because we have students that will be. Re-engaging with kids that are already been in person, and some have been in hybrid and building that sense of community within a classroom. That's what teachers do and do well, and having the opportunity to do that with some some time and some flexibility. With not making sure you're getting right to that chemistry lesson right away. Talk to the kids first, give them some latitude within that first week or so, so that they can build that sense of trust and and collaboration. So those are some of the initial questions and things from the survey. I have probably five hundred and seventy-nine comments from staff. As I've gone through them, many of them talk about how am I going to be able to manage? With more students in person in front of me and the students that are also. Just zooming in remotely. That was a reoccurring theme over and over again throughout many of the surveys. The other reoccurring theme was the benefits of Wednesdays. The Wednesday did come up often throughout. Just the comments that continued, and the other ones, I think, were in the survey, talking about just cleaning protocols. Trying to make sure that those things continue and they don't just drop off. Because people don't want us to get too too relaxed in the things that we're looking at in order to keep people safe. So those are just the the brief comments and things that were in the survey, but our overall goal is trying to, since we're under one percent. With the county's new infection yesterday, I think it was forty-three. People were newly infected throughout Anadaga County, which has almost above four hundred and fifty thousand people, so. That is also staying very low. So Central New York has really made some great gains. So are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes. You go first.
Mine was just simple. I just wonder if you could update us on where we are with the barriers.
The the barriers. So just so that the board knows, I'm reminding you that every Monday I'm meeting with a team of directors. Throughout the organization, my cabinet, I've invited Mindy and John Perilla. Because we want to make sure we're not missing anything. We want to hear from perspective from the from the union side as well. So the barriers right now, because there's a lot of different things being said, so there's several options. If we try to use these tablet arm chairs, that's not ideal. The I have not gotten back from the county what their thoughts are with the specifications on that. It's funny because I just saw something from the CDC recently, and. Who knows? I know we're saying barriers, but we may get to a point where the CDC says only a mask is required. The thing right now, K through seven. We have desks and or tables, so those barriers will will be able to have them ready to go. By the time we start without a problem. We really do not, we want to make sure we're making the right decision because there was news. I won't say article, but Friday night, Central Square, they were talking about. Do you wear the ma- the mask with a face shield? Now, that's something that our district and all the districts in Anadaga County proposed. Several weeks ago, but that did not get approved, and so we're kind of curious because. That is not something that you have to transport, makes it a little bit easier for students, especially the secondary level. The cleaning, because it's your personal item, it's up to the student to keep that clean. It solves many different problems, so we're kind of. Waiting to see what they're going to say to that question again, because they have turned this down already, but I think it's gaining more traction. And it solves a lot of problems, especially financial problems, because the cost is substantially cheaper. Than to try to buy a trial, a tri kind of thing that's plexiglass that you have to carry. At the secondary level from point A to point B.
All right, my question. I'm just going to keep it to the elementary because high school is going to be down the road. So if I'm reading it correctly, Dan, April twelfth will be the day that we'll go to five days a week. Am I correct?
That's that's the day that we're we're shooting for, yes.
Okay, and parents have, I saw the date, so it's early April, I believe, is the deadline. And you can't go past the deadline because principals, administrators have to work on. The number of students in each room. So I guess my question is, do you know if you're still going to have? The same virtual teacher? So if I'm first grade and I'm a virtual teacher, will I remain a virtual teacher full-time?
So right now, Greg, we are collecting the data, the the survey for this closed Friday morning. There were several parents that had not answered, so we spent all day today, each building, calling parents to get what is their. So what is their choice so that we know exactly how many students we're looking at to be in person or still virtual? We do have virtual teachers, and we still are offering that virtual option because we know that there are students and families that still. Do not feel comfortable, or they may have a compromised immune system. Right. So the tricky part is depending on the numbers and how they come in. That will sway what happens between how many virtual teachers you need. I believe if I'm not mistaken, and Jason chime in, I believe there was thirty-two or thirty-three virtual teachers at the start of the school year. And so it looks like with early numbers, we're trying to keep students and staff whole. However, we cannot guarantee a hundred percent that a student, if they're choosing to go from remote. Into hybrid or coming back into school, that they would be able to remain with the same teacher. But those are things that we're we're taking a look at and will be communicating back with parents ASAP. But I think the numbers were just kind of finalized, at least for elementary, end of day today, and I haven't sat had the time to sit down with them at this point.
Would there any be any chance that you would have to, I'm probably not a good question, but. Increased staffing.
The projections do not do not suggest that at this time.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any more questions at this time? And again, what in our meeting this morning? One of the goals is to communicate updates as far as where we are with making this transition. On a weekly basis to parents and or the staff, so that even if it's something that we've completed and we have a checklist of what needs to be done. And we're developing a timeline so that we can say, this has been done, you can expect X, Y, Z. To be coming to you, whether it be about transportation or an orientation. So those things will be coming, and we have a lot of people with eyes on it, and we meet first thing in the morning every Monday.
Dan, I have a question. What about busing? Will the changes to the regulations, a three-foot distance, will that affect busing? Allow more kids on the bus?
That's a great question. So the current guidance that they that they wrote doesn't give us an actual number, and that's what we're pressing the county on. Can we have an actual number or percentage so that we have some clearer guidance as far as how many kids that we can put on the bus? So right now, going from six to three is is actually is huge, but again, we've been putting one student in each seat. All the way back currently, unless you come from the same household, then you're doubling up. So with three feet, we were asking for that same type of specifics for busing. Because it makes it very difficult for Matt to plan a route. Based on a number that based on something that where we don't have a number count, because they literally try to put a number of students on a certain bus. And they look at the streets and the routes, and then they move on. Without something a little more concrete, it makes it tough for Matt, so. That's what our part of our Wednesday meeting with superintendents and our discussion for questions for the county.
And perhaps the shields would help with that as well. If they're able to wear shields and the face mask.
Well, the shields would help with so many things, because I mean, it's it's on your person. You don't have to have something in between if that's allowed. It's a double protection. You have a mask and the shield. Having the face shield is a game changer for many different things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Okay, we're at the point for comments from the audience. Do we have any signups today?
No, we did not.
We did not, okay. Then we're at committee reports. I I'll go to Mary and Bob, but I believe you just have dates for us, but Mary, I'll start.
Our next policy committee meeting is next week on Tuesday, March twenty-third at five P M via Zoom.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Crabtree.
March twenty-fourth, five o'clock Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
I already let you know about the letters that went out about in-person learning, so that's just a repeat. What just came out today was about Regent's exams. So you may have seen Regent's exams in August have been canceled, and they've talked about three through eight testing. So there's currently still three through eight testing for E L A and math, but only session one. So instead of having two or three sessions, it's just session one, and then for science. There used to be the the performance portion. It's only the written portion for grades four through eight. Other announcements, girls varsity basketball, eleven and oh, really, again, outstanding job. And just a great group, and we're going to miss Jessica Cook as she's heading off to Toledo. But again, strong performances by all. And the last one, I just wanted to repeat, but I wanted just to make mention. Geo Heater and Kyle Marchuk announce our games, and they've been doing an outstanding job. And we received a nice email from a parent from a neighboring district that was listening to the play-by-play commentary. At home, and they just were amazed at how how polished these young men were in their play-by-play announcing, and they said it really. Just picked up watching the game to another level, and they just wanted to say congratulations. To the boys, to the athletic program, and just to the district that what we've been able to. To just build with some of our students for that kind of career. And again, it looks like these two young men will have a promising career in play-by-play announcing. And I believe that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowles. With regards to Board of Ed comments, I want to just I'll I'll take a moment and then I'll open it up, of course. I was going to ask to have a brief discussion about board coming back and meeting in person, but I think it was done for me with regards to. Our expiration of the ability to hold these public meetings via Zoom. We we received an email, Connie, I believe, the end of this month or the twenty-sixth of March or something like that.
March twenty-sixth is what the governor's order was extended to.
So after that point, we go into April, it's it's looking like it'll be likely we'd be back in person, so I wanted the board to be aware of that, and. If they extend it, we may want to have that discussion anyway. And this, again, the the order only only refers to the meetings of the Board of Education, does not reference the committee meetings. Prefer to leave that up to the chairs if they want to continue that via Zoom or go to a person that was, of course, would be their decision. But I wondered if there are any comments on that thought when it Mrs. Gibson already has looked into and setting up the room based on the restrictions for people to come in and participate. Have the gym as a backup via closed circuit, which we did. We were opened up in the fall, so it looks like we're on the way to be able to be in compliance. Depending what happens. So other than that, I don't know what the committee people think. We have policy, legislation, and audit. I know, Bob, with legislation, doing it via Zoom, you've had great participation from the legislators and their or and or staff.
Yeah.
And I almost say that might be more effective that way, but that obviously is your call as we go forward and and see what. April brings us. Any thoughts from anyone or?
Well, just from me, I mean, we still have to ensure safe distance for our committees, and I think that was one reason why we stayed with our Zoom meeting.
And if we go forward, I know we had a discussion when Connie put this out about. We may be looking at barriers for board meetings if that's the direction we end up going. So stay tuned. There will be more information on that when we know. What the governor's final decision is on whether it extends beyond or it's done. So. Any other board comments?
I have a question.
You two go.
Go ahead, Bob. Go ahead.
No, no, you go, you go.
I I think this question is going to be more for Don. Have we received any information from the developer that's looking for the six million dollar tax break in pilot programs in Cicero? I know that'd probably impact our school district quite a bit.
Oh, we've not.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's right.
Hey, Bob.
Okay, and I like the superintendent goes first because when Miss Speech was it, I always said too much. So he said a couple of things, but on a sad note. I don't know if the board realized that O C M Bosse's lost one of their. Administrators in business to a tragic auto accident, which you all heard about in the news. Sean Joyce, I got to know him, and I know Michael, it's very difficult for Michael Marizio because he worked with him quite often. Was just, and I know Don Keegan, you must have worked with him also, just. An upbeat person who did so much, not just the O C M Bosse's, but. Other Bosse's, anything to do with finances. He was the manager of central services. And a tribute to him was, you couldn't even get close to the funeral parlor yesterday in Camillus. There were hundreds and hundreds of people in line, and I was fortunate to go with the deputy superintendent to the funeral today. And we got there almost an hour early because the love that was there for this gentleman and his family was tremendous. It's so difficult when you lose somebody that not only is a good. Working for Bosse's, you know what I mean? He's he's just a good worker and so forth, but is good with people and worked well with people, so. Sadness at Bosse's the last week. Again, Dan talked about the girls, but congratulations to our boys this year. They turned their season around under a new coach, seven and four, and I just looked at Syracuse dot com. And yes, the girls are number one in the area, but the boys have moved up to number three. You know, and I feel, and I would tell George this, but I feel very good. We beat Liverpool. Yes, the other day, seventy-three to fifty-four. So I always like to be cool, and now we got football coming up. So I also want to say there was an article yesterday. I remember saying this, I think at the board meeting last week, about the young gentleman that worked at Kenny's, and I go into Kenny's quite often. You know, he he just wasn't the same as he was before, kind of down and and so forth. And he's a hockey player, and he goes, Mr. Katchat, please talk to Mr. Bowles. And Mr. Bernarisk, I really want to play hockey this year. I'm a senior. I really, really want to do it. And I said, well, we got, you know, we've got to go by whatever. Well, we did have the season, and there was a great article with him and. And there was a great article with him and his brother. It was Aiden McKenzie, Ethan McKenzie, his younger brother, and Tucker Knapp. About, yes, their um, record wasn't the greatest. But I got to play with my friends and I got to go out there and held that hockey stick and, and have a season. To me, Dan and Tim and the whole county, thank you for letting these kids play. It made a difference in their life. Um, school is academic, but it's also other things like music. I've heard good news. I think I'm right, Dan. The marching band's gonna play at home football games. Um, if I'm hearing it correctly, I, I mean, that is, that is outstanding. So uh, I want to thank Mr. Bernarowski and Mr. Bowles. I also want to thank Mr. Bowles because we were letting parents uh. Go to varsity basketball games and he let them go to hockey. So the seniors got, their parents got to see them in their senior games. So thank you very much for that. And then just one last thing, um, another sad thing. You mentioned Robin Quackenbush. And your wife knows her quite well. She was the treasurer of Dollars for Scholars for about ten years. Um, and was the one that helped give the checks to students and that's a sad one too. But thank you for letting me talk. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Any other comments?
I do.
Yes.
But thank you very much for mentioning Robin's name. She did put a lot of hard work into Dollars for Scholars and it was a sad loss. Thank you for bringing up her name. Um, on another note, I wanted to thank Dan Bowles again. We met um with the junior and senior high schools in the canteen in a joint meeting. And I think um, we have a testament to the teachers and the staff. Uh, with the junior high and the senior high that compared to other districts. We have a social emotional problem, mental health issues that are coming up. However, not nearly as bad as Dan is keeping track of as some other disco districts. It's sad what is going on, but our teachers, our staff, our admin are finding ways to keep these kids. Um, you know, it's not good, but it could be a lot worse. And so I think because we're not hearing some of the numbers in comparison. I think that has to do a lot with the teachers and the coaches and everyone else that's reaching out and keeping in touch with these kids. That is keeping them, they're in a bad situation, but as I said, it could be a lot worse. That said, with them coming back, I'm very concerned, uh, mention of uh, where uh. Oh my goodness, I'm gonna lose the name, uh, Don, the surplus that we have.
Our fund balance and.
Thank you. Yes, there was mention of the fund balance, so we could use that to supplement whatever we're not getting. Unfortunately, I think when these kids come back to school, we're gonna find that we're gonna need that money for their emotional health. Their mental health. I think what with the coverage that we have, we're gonna find grossly inadequate. And we're gonna need to find a way to fund getting them the help that they need. And if um, the governor thinks that we can reach into that um, that fund balance. I think we're gonna need it for the mental health of the kids and that concerns me greatly. So I just wanted to uh put that out there on record. So thank you for keeping track of that and keeping after. I'm saying, I don't care how much extra we have in that account. We're gonna need it.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna move on and ask for a motion to accept in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting of March first. Twenty twenty-one, if I get a motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, they minute, the minutes are carried. Like to combine B, C, and D, so I get a motion for B, C, and D, motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. B, C, and D being the placement of disabled students by the District Committee on Special Ed. The District Committee on Preschool Special and, and the Home Instruction Review Committee. So having that before us, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, B, C, and D are carried. Thank you very much. Uh, if I could get a motion for item E, acknowledgement of business office reports for February twenty-one. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion on those items? Item E, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, motion carried. Discussion action items, if I get a motion, put A before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington. This would be our ballot propositions for the May eighteenth, twenty-one and the election. Any discussion there? Okay, we see none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. And please a motion to put B before us, a notice of the budget hearing and election. Motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion there? We see that we have that stated for. Oh, I just saw it a minute ago. The hearing is May fourth, isn't it? Yes, sorry. May fourth is six P M. Thank you. Any, any discussion besides my own discussion with myself here? Okay, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. Like to have a motion for O C M Bosse through your agreement for high speed, for lit fiber for high-speed communications. Item C before us, please. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from the Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Item D, estimated non-resident health and welfare rates, a motion, please place that before us. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. Item E, recommendation to create a one-point-oh F T E registered nurse. A motion, please place that before us. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Thorne. Uh, you would have read about that in the Friday letter. That's going to help us. Be prepared to cover the costs or the, any needs that arise uh with bringing students back. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And item F, motion please for surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Thank you. Item A, instructional personnel report included in which we have the coaches for the various seasons, which I won't try to name. Because they're, they don't match what season it really is. Motion please for A, motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from. Mr. Thorne, any discussion there?
I, I, it really doesn't go with this, but uh, I should have asked it before. I'm, I apologize. Are um, what's going to be the capacity at football games? How, how many people are gonna be allowed to go outside in the stadium? Has that been decided yet?
Right now, it's uh still at two parents per, per individ- for individual athlete.
Even though it's outside, we have capacity for thousands there?
Uh, uh, unless some things change, and again, they change by the day. That was what it has been. Um, but, but uh, it could change by, by the end of uh the week.
Well, the first home, the first home game's Friday night.
Bob, the way I read it was uh indoor, it's two per family for home only. Outdoor, it's two per family for home and visitors, so there'll be more people in the stands on the outdoor activities.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Other, other questions on item?
I apologize.
Nope, uh, I think it fits in. Uh, we, we, I can make it work. It works in there. There's a. You didn't hear a point of order or a gavel slam down, so we're good. Okay, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Support staff personnel B, if I get a motion, please. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion on item personnel report B? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, is carried. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to put forth a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of one individual with no action to follow. If I could get a second, please. Second from Mr. Marizio, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And we have bells for our German. If I could get a motion for a German here. Motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, we are adjourned. I will see you over at the.